Okay, I think we're going to go ahead and get started here this evening. Can I have the roll?
Greg Strike.
Here.
Andre Spinelli.
Here.
Jared Gardner.
Here.
Aaron O'Quinn.
Here.
Radhika Krishna.
Here.
Scott Polis.
Here.
Matt Dimick.
Here.
Jim Winchester. Jefron is excused. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, and welcome Commissioner Polis to your first meeting. We look forward to meeting you in person. I'm sorry, Dimick, I don't know why I said Polis. I was looking at the wrong list here. Apologies to that. We'll go ahead and move on to the minutes. Can I, is there a motion to approve the minutes? Okay, moved by Commissioner Spinelli, seconded by Commissioner Polis. Any objection? Seeing no objection, minutes are approved. Moving on to disclosures. Commissioner Polis correctly this time.
No disclosures.
Commissioner O'Quinn.
No disclosures.
Commissioner Spinelli.
No disclosures.
Commissioner Strike.
No disclosures.
Commissioner Krishna.
No disclosures.
Commissioner Dimick.
I wasn't at the meeting before. Yeah, correct.
Okay, yeah, that's correct. So you'll just abstain from, from the consent agenda. Thank you. And no disclosures for myself. Moving on then to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve? Moved by Commissioner Spinelli, seconded by Commissioner O'Quinn. Any objection? Seeing no objection, that motion is approved. Okay, next up is our public hearings for this evening. We'll get right to those before we begin. I'll go ahead and read the procedure by which the public may speak to the commission at its meetings. After the staff presentation is completed on public hearing items, the chair will ask for public testimony on the issue. Persons who wish to testify will follow the time limits established in the commission rules of procedure. Petitioners, including all of his or her representatives, will receive 10 minutes. Part of this time may be reserved for rebuttal. Representatives of groups, community councils, PTAs, et cetera, will receive five minutes. Individuals will receive three minutes. When your testimony is complete, you may be asked questions by the commission. You may only testify once on any issue unless questioned by the commission. An individual may have appeal rights relating to any action the Planning and Zoning Commission takes, except commission recommendations to the assembly which are not appealable. Appeals must be filed with the clerk's office within 20 days after approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission of the resolution which is the commission's final decision. A fee for the appeal is required at the time of filing. So the first case, we have an agenda, is 2022-0002. Can we have a staff report?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I wanted to point out late comments received from the Cook Inlet Soccer Club in supplemental packet. So Anchorage Sand and Gravel, ASNG, is seeking to rezone two tracts of land totaling 66 acres from R1A zoning, a single-family residential district, large lot, to PLI, Public Lands and Institutions zoning district. The property was a large natural resource extraction site that became a fill operation. The last action taken by the Planning and Zoning Commission at this site was to approve amendments to the conditional use for land reclamation. Previously, or previous conditional uses for land reclamation stated that the future use of the property would be for sports fields and recreational uses. The rezone application states that the purpose of the zoning map amendment is to change the zoning to PLI district to allow sports fields, playgrounds, farmers markets, pavilions, community gardens, other types of activities like that. This is because the land reclamation operation deposited unclassified fill throughout the site, which is not suitable for any structures in its current state. Fill materials at this site included peat, clay, silty soil, hydroax materials, tree fragments, stumps, turf, and other organics associated with permitted clearing and grubbing operations, including wood chips from grinding operations, concrete remnants related to demolition, concrete testing, and construction site cleanup. There were 434 public hearing notices mailed on December 10th of 2021. One public comment from a neighbor was received, and also the Sand Lake Community Council adopted a resolution opposing this rezone. Both those comments are within the packet, and you can see them starting on page 52 of your packet. In terms of the approval criteria for a rezone, the first approval criteria, it's in the best interest of the citizens of Anchorage, shall promote public health, safety, and general welfare. This standard, or this approval criteria is met. The most recently adopted plans for this, for this site call for it to be rezoned to the PLI zoning district. Anchorage 2040 identifies in the land use plan map this site as other open space, and the implementing zoning district is the PLI district. The West Anchorage District Plan similarly shows that the site is other areas that function as park and natural resource. So Anchorage 2040 was adopted two years ago. West Anchorage District Plan adopted in 2014. So they were several years apart. They're both relatively recent plans, even the West Anchorage District Plan is still a recent plan. And there's a slight wording difference, but the, it's the same designation. When you read the, what is, the intent of those land use designations, they're, they're very similar. This rezone from R1A to PLI reflects the reality that this is a large property that has been a fill site for many decades, and it cannot support R1A residential development, single-family homes on it. The uncompacted, unclassified fill is not suitable for any structures in its current state because of settling that will occur over time. ASNG has consistently stated in the past, in that past conditional use approvals that came before the Planning and Zoning Commission, that the future use of the property would be passive or active recreation. This is privately held land. It is not municipal owned. However, the future use of the property for outdoor recreation is a benefit to the general welfare of the city and particularly of this subarea of Anchorage, Southwest Anchorage. The approval criteria number two, the standard is also met. It complies and conforms with comprehensive plan. So the rezone is supported in Anchorage 2020 by policies four, five, seven, and 14. And it's also supported by policy 1.1 in Anchorage 2040. Approval criteria number three, the standard is met. This is consistency with the zoning district's purpose and the requested rezone. This rezoning is consistent with the purpose of the PLI zoning district. The PLI district is intended for major public and quasi-public civic administrative and institutional uses and activities. However, many parks and neighborhoods throughout town are zoned PLI. The PLI district also has 25-foot setbacks from all property lines, some of the larger setbacks of any of the zoning districts. Approval criteria number four, compatibility with surrounding zoning and development. The standard is met. The proposed rezoning is compatible with the surrounding zoning and development. The zoning around this site is R2M to the north, R2A and PLI to the east, B1A, it's neighborhood-serving commercial, and R2M, multifamily residential, and R1 to the south, and then R1A to the west. The north and east sides of the site are developed with single-family residential homes and parks, Jade Park. The south side has undeveloped commercial zoning and multifamily residential zoning, and of course, West Diamond Boulevard. Across West Diamond Boulevard is a multifamily residential development, the Sea Cliff condominiums. The west side of the site abuts Sand Lake Road, and then on the other side of Sand Lake Road is, is West Park residential subdivision. The PLI district allows a wide variety of uses. However, most of those uses are, are allowed, most of the uses that are allowed in the PLI district require public hearing, either major site plan review or conditional use permit approvals. And both major site plan reviews and conditional use permits require conformance with the comprehensive plan, and, and the designation is that light green, which is other area that functions as park or natural resource. In a use, if a use is proposed that does not comply with the comprehensive plan, then it will not meet the approval criteria and shall not be allowed. Additionally, Anchorage Municipal Code 2105, so Chapter 5 of Title 21, has use-specific standards. So, you know, buffering requirements, landscaping requirements for, for uses to promote compatibility, also different setbacks. In some cases, more of the, some of the more offensive uses have a requirement to be 1,000 foot separated from a residential district or a park, which would effectively prohibit those uses. And then Anchorage Municipal Code 2107, that's Chapter 7, has the development and design standards that address compatibility of the proposed use with the surrounding area. Those are the development and design standards. Approval criteria number five, the standard is met. The site borders two arterial streets, West Diamond Boulevard and Sand Lake Road. Approval criteria six, the standard is met. This rezoning will not result in adverse impacts on the natural environment. Everything will have to comply with the zoning code as well as the building code, Title 23, and requirements. Approval criteria number seven, the standard is met. The proposed rezoning will not result in significant impacts on adjacent land uses. The site abuts West Diamond Boulevard, Sand Lake Road, which are both classified as arterial streets. In the official Streets and Highways Plan, the east boundary of the site adjoins Endicott Street right-of-way, which is 30 feet wide and not constructed, as well as Jade Park. The PLI district has zoning setbacks of 25 feet from all property lines, and the north side of the site adjoins residential subdivision, but as, as well Edna M. Fisk Memorial Park. Many of the uses that are allowed in the PLI district require conditional use permit. Actually, the old zoning code, which is not in effect anymore, everything that was allowed in the PLI district required either a major site plan review or a conditional use permit. And so the carryover into the new code is, is, you know, most, you know, if you go down the table of allowed uses, there's nearly nothing that's, that's permitted by right. Everything requires a public hearing in front of this body, in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Okay. I think approval criteria eight, the standard is met. The rezoned PLI district would not extend a land use pattern that is inconsistent with the comprehensive plan. Portion of the property to the east abuts Municipal Park, Jade Park. The site of this rezoning was a large expanse of unclassified fill and cannot support structures without building on pilings or excavating the, the fill, many feet of fill, and then, you know, removing that, replacing it with compacted fill, it would be an enormous job. The south and west sides of the site border West Diamond Boulevard and Sand Lake Road. Approval criteria nine, this will not result in a split zone lot. The, the standard is also met. So the department finds that all nine approval criteria are met, and is recommending approval of the application requesting to rezone to PLI attached as a draft assembly ordinance on page nine of your packet. I'd be happy to answer questions.
Any questions before we move to the applicant? Or anyone on the line? Okay, can we hear from? Oh, sorry.
I'm in here, but we're short staff. I get it. Just one question. Do we have any idea when the whole extraction fill process began at this site? Was it zoned R1A from the very beginning?
Yeah, I think the general area-wide zoning, the original zoning was R1A, and that has, and that has continued on unchanged all this time because a natural resource extraction and a land reclamation are both allowed in that district. I was sort of thinking about this the other night, and, and, you know, if you look across the way at, at, at West Park, you know, that, there was excavation, and then instead of a fill operation, that was, became a residential subdivision, single-family homes, and some, like duplexes and planned community. But, but on this side, rather than development of housing, it's been many decades of fill operation. And it's one of the last remaining sort of natural resource extraction, large sites within, within the Anchorage Bowl that will soon be coming to an end. Thank you.
Commissioner O'Quinn.
Yeah, so I just wanted to maybe go back in time a little bit and talk about the parcels on the south end of the property that we rezoned. I think it said 2019 in the packet. I remembered that being a well-attended meeting with lots of comments from the, the neighbors. And I just wanted to see if you could maybe just, maybe remind us, because I think from that context is important. I know this application stands on its own, but it'd be good, I think, for the commission to have that context as well.
Thank you for the question, Commissioner O'Quinn. So the, the, the natural resource extract, the, the natural resource extraction site, all those acres, and then the preceding fill operation to fill the hole back, never touched. You used some like 10 acres at the, at the corner of West Diamond Boulevard and Sand Lake Road. And so that was sort of good high ground. And that was designated in, you know, Anchorage 2040, and I think also the West Anchorage District Plan for, to be rezoned from R1A to commercial and multifamily residential. And so that application to rezone that to comply with the plan occurred a couple of years ago. And there were some neighbors that objected to it because they were afraid it would be, well, I don't want to characterize, mischaracterize it, but there was concern that it would be like a gas station that was unwanted, or that it would be multifamily housing, which would be incongruent with, you know, other homes in the, in the neighborhood and that sort of thing. However, of course, there is multifamily housing on the south side of West Diamond Boulevard, the Sea Cliff condos. Anyway, that was filled with compacted, it's always been separate from, from this site. And that was, I guess, filled with compacted structural fill, and, you know, hopefully one day be developed for its intended use, which is the R2M, you know, maybe townhouses or some multifamily residential, and a neighborhood-serving commercial at that corner, the B1A zoning. That rezone occurred a couple of years ago. There was controversy, you know, and that, but that has no part in this rezone. It's a separate site. It has very different characteristics. It's adjoining this property, but not a part of this rezone application. And I think that's the, what you wanted to underline maybe was that, that sort of controversial rezone is, is separate and not affected by this rezone.
Great, thanks. I appreciate that. And then just with regard to this specific parcel and the Sand Lake Community Council's specific comments, I'm, it seems like they support parks, but they're opposed to the rezone. So can you explain why, what, what their exact issue is? Is it that they think that the, that the PLI will permit the owner to build one of the permitted uses that appears in the use table, and that they won't build a soccer field? Is that the concern?
I think so, but I think that they'll be testifying tonight as well, and it may be better to direct that question to them, because I, I don't want to speak for any other group. But, yeah, that seems to be the, the case.
Great, thank you.
Okay, seeing no further questions in the queue, I think, if there's a representative from the petitioner. You'll have 10 minutes. You can reserve time for rebuttal. And if you could state your name, sorry, for the record before you begin.
Craig Bennett, B-E-N-N-E-T-T. Good evening, Chairman, members of the board, planning staff. My name is Craig Bennett with S4 Group. I represent the petitioners tonight. Staff presentation was well done, so I'll just briefly touch on some of the main points. As staff stated, the site is about 66 acres, is currently zoned residential R1A. Starting in the mid-'40s, the property has been used as a natural resource extraction site, and then became an unclassified clean fill operation. It's approaching its end-use phase, and we're seeking to rezone to PLI, implementing the 2040 land use designation for the site. The 2020, Anchorage 2040, and the West Anchorage District Plan all support this rezone. Starting with the 2020, it supports the rezone with Policy 4. Rezoning to PLI will implement the West Anchorage District Plan and the Anchorage 2040. Policy 5, the proposed zoning is compatible with the neighboring zoning and land uses. Jade Park is PLI, and it borders to the east, and you can see the location on page 38 in the packet. Kincaid Park is also PLI. Policy 7, open space and park is compatible with adjoining uses. And Policy 14, the clean fill and comp plans point to park-related uses. Next, the Anchorage 2040 plan. If you turn to page, page 39 in the staff report, shows the land use plan map. As you can see, the area is designated as other open space. Turning to the next page shows what other open space is. It lists parks, open space, outdoor recreation facilities, and natural preservation areas. The implementing zoning district for this is PLI. Page 41 lists the uses and zoning for the site. As you can see, under the zoning heading, the 2040 plan is designating the site as PLI. I want to highlight, this rezone will bring the property in line with the 2040 plan. The final plan that is applicable is the West Anchorage District Plan. Page 42 in the staff report shows the classification for this area as other areas that function as park or natural resource. This has the same meaning as the 2040 classification, and again, is implemented as PLI. The clean fill site is nearing completion, and this rezone is preparing for the final use. Some future uses that the community has mentioned that they would like to see were sports fields, farmers market, community gardens, sledding hills, BMX track, outdoor amphitheater, and more. A lot of the, the proposed uses are not allowed in the current residential zoning. Most will also require a conditional use public hearing process in the proposed PLI zoning. Any future use will have to conform to the comprehensive plan designation of other open space. In conclusion, as staff stated, the comprehensive plan designates this area as PLI. The planning department recommends approval. None of the reviewing agencies object to this rezone. This meets all nine approval criteria for a rezone, and I ask the board to please recommend approval. Thank you, and I'll save the rest of my time for rebuttal.
Thank you. I'll just, I'm curious, to what extent is there a planned use at this point, and how far along are those, is that thought process?
A site plan you're referring to? Right now, there is no planned use, site plan, besides the concept of doing the things that we kind of listed, the sports fields and everything. We're waiting for the board to approve, the assembly to approve, the rezone, and then we'll come back before this board with a, a conditional use plan showing the, the concept. A little bit early to do it now.
Okay, I don't see any further questions from the commission, so we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. We've got a few people who will be calling in, but before we move to that, I'll see if there's anyone present here that wishes to speak to this matter. Sorry, you, yeah, you can turn on the microphone there, there should be a button in the middle. And if you could state your name for the record before you begin.
Yes, my name is Adam Hensel. Last name is H-E-N-S-E-L. I'm the president of the Board of Directors for Cook Inlet Soccer Club here in Anchorage, Alaska. And I got to know these gentlemen. They reached out and inquired about the interests we would have in kind of helping development or maybe kind of help with this rezoning process to push for more soccer fields in the state of Alaska. We've talked a little bit about the opportunities that would present for us as a club. It would give us the opportunity to develop a place to have both our recreation and competitive teams practice and play. So there is a huge benefit to us and our youth. We are primarily based in South Anchorage, so it would be the South Anchorage community benefiting from that. After working through some renderings with these gentlemen and kind of talking about the possibilities, there are, I would love to have all 66 acres be soccer fields, but I understand that's not the case. We've worked through some ideas to potentially add enough fields to host an annual soccer tournament, depending on parking and layout and things like that. That would open up some opportunities for sponsorships in the area and some local businesses to come out and benefit from the added foot traffic from people from as far out as the Matanuska Valley, Eagle River, everyone coming into play in that tournament locally. So there is a, a big community benefit there. Also, depending on the layout, one of the biggest issues for our youth soccer in Anchorage is having to travel up to Fairbanks for our state tournament. If this facility gets developed in a way that would enable us to have enough fields, we could look at sponsoring that tournament and bringing that tournament back to Anchorage, where it would be an even bigger economic benefit to the local community. These gentlemen had some great ideas about tying, you know, a bike path or something of that nature into the Jade Park fields and kind of having one big complex of baseball fields, soccer fields. I know there were some other things listed. I would love to see them all be soccer fields, but the bike path would give parents and the local community a great opportunity to increase their exercise and activity levels as well. So I think there are some awesome opportunities here if we could go through and get the PLI designation, or the designation changed to PLI, excuse me. Really, that's all I have that I wanted to say, so if anybody has anything for me, please go ahead.
Thank you for your testimony. Is there anyone else here that's wishing to speak to this matter? Seeing no one, we'll go ahead and move to the phone testimony.
Hello?
Hi, is this Peter Hammons?
Not Peter.
No, I apologize, Parker.
Not a problem. People mix it up with Spider-Man, given that there's a movie out in the theaters right now.
Sorry about that. This is the Planning and Zoning Commission calling for your public testimony on case And since you're calling as the Sand Lake Community Council's representative, you'll have five minutes. If you could state your full name for the record, you could begin.
All right. Full name is Parker Hammons, and I'm calling in today on behalf of the Sand Lake Community Council as requested by dozens of members. Am I to begin my testimony now?
Yes, go ahead. Yes, go ahead.
All right. The Sand Lake Community Council on December 13th of 2021 adopted Sand Lake Resolution 2021-02, a resolution pertaining to the Anchorage sand and gravel reason of Pullan Park Track 1 and Lancaster Track A. M.O.A. Planning Application Project Number 2022-0002. Whereas the Anchorage Municipal Charter, Article 8, Section 8.01 establishes community councils as representatives for neighborhoods and planning and development. And whereas community councils, including the Sand Lake Community Council, are intended to reflect actual neighborhoods and provide guidance, advice on management of lands within their boundaries. And whereas the proposed rezone for Pullan Park Track 1 and Lancaster Track A is from R1A to PLI, the present zoning allows for residential, single-family, and two-family dwellings. The proposed rezone to PLI would dramatically change the character of the neighborhood by allowing utility facilities, public work, maintenance yards, school buildings, or homeless shelters. Whereas the Anchorage 2040 Land Use Plan was adopted by the Anchorage Assembly in 2017, and it guides the future pattern of development and distribution of land uses across Anchorage Bowl. The Land Use Plan provides a baseline from which land use decisions can provide by providing greater land use predictability and clear policy direction. In addition, the Land Use Plan is important in clarifying the framework for making zoning and development decisions. Whereas the 2040 Land Use Plan requires that amendments, Title 21, the zoning map, and other discretionary municipal actions will be consistent with the 2040 LUP. Whereas the proposed rezone is not compatible with and violates Anchorage 2040 Land Use Plan. The proposed rezone is in the southwest corner and bordering on the intersection between Sand Lake Road and Diamond Boulevard. The area surrounding the proposed area is rectangular, is shaped rectangularly, and is shown in light green color and designated as open space for parks or natural areas. A very small rectangle within the southwest corner of the larger light-green rectangle is showing in a light beige/tan color. This smaller rectangle is designated as compact mixed residential low. Thus, the proposed rezone to PLI violates the land use designation as set forth in the Anchorage 2040 Land Use Plan and should not be approved. Whereas the proposed rezone ignores the needs of West Anchorage, the West Anchorage District Plan in pages 187 and 188 clearly states that Sand Lake is especially underserved by parks, both close-to-home recreation areas and the larger parks that serve several neighborhoods or a large section of the community. Whereas the proposed rezone is not compatible with the surrounding neighborhoods. The present zoning to the north, south, west, and east consists of single-family and two-family dwellings. Thus, the proposed rezone to PLI is not compatible. The Sand Lake Community Council has previously indicated its disapproval of this rezoning during its October 11th, 2021 meeting. A motion was made by a Sand Lake Community Council member posing the question, is it the sense of the SLCC to be against supporting the ASNG Pullan Park effort to rezone from R1A to PLI or B33/PLI? There were 27 yes votes, seven no votes, and three abstentions. The result of this vote was transmitted to the appropriate municipality of Anchorage and assembly staff. Now therefore, the Sand Lake Community Council hereby opposes the rezone of said property from R1A to public land, you know, community facility or institution for many reasons stated above, including it violates the Anchorage 2040 Land Use Plan, ignores the recommendations in the West Anchorage District Plan, and is compatible with the surrounding neighborhoods. That resolution, as previously mentioned, was adopted on the 13th day of December 2021. There were 30 votes in favor, three votes against, and one abstention. Furthermore, it is interesting to hear the discussions of the roads of Sand Lake Road and West Diamond Boulevard. The Sand Lake Community Council would like to highlight that the West Diamond Boulevard and Sand Lake intersection there, there's a roundabout. And the previous discussions where there of establishing a large park facility, the arterial roads there are currently not constructed to handle the extra amount of traffic. You can, people in the neighborhood would point towards the intersection of Sand Lake Road and Raspberry Road to air their, to air their concerns with the current traffic loads on that northern side of Sand Lake Road. So there are traffic concerns towards the southern edge as well. Yes?
Oh, sorry, thank you. That was the extent of your time there. I appreciate your testimony. I think we have a few, may have a few questions from you here from the commission, so if you could hang on a second.
Of course, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Spinelli?
In your testimony, you mentioned the small parcel that's shaded, light tan, and you object to this rezone based on that. But on the information I have in front of me, that small tan area is excluded from this petition. Was the Sand Lake Community Council aware of that when you made that statement?
Yes, and the resolution I just read, I read it for the record, sir. The Sand Lake Community Council's understanding is that the previous rezone, it now shows as B1A with a special limitation. And the other part of that corner parcel that was previously rezoned is R2M with a specialized limitation. I do not have the coloration, the colorations that were mentioned in the resolution before me, but I do see that on page 25 of the staff, Planning Department staff analysis document, it is currently zoned as compact mixed residential low for that general area on that southwest corner of the old, of that previous, you know, the part that was carved out that was previously a rectangle, if that, if I'm conveying my.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that you know that that's not part of what we're discussing tonight, that property.
Of course.
Okay. And then my other question was, you know, we heard from municipal staff that this is supported by the 2040 Plan, and it appears to me to be supported by the 2040 Plan. And I'm just a little confused on why the Sand Lake Community Council does not believe that the PLI rezone is supported by the 2040 Plan.
The, one second. So it generally boils down to, in essence, what the intended use of the rezone is. There are several discussions within various neighborhoods in this part of Anchorage that the PLI rezon designation would provide an ability for a future land developer to not adhere to what is being stated tonight by the applicant.
Okay, thank you. I have no further questions.
Okay, I don't see any further questions. Thank you, Mr. Hammons, for your testimony. Sorry, were you intending to testify to this?
I just had a follow-up question. Is he only filling questions from these?
Yeah, that is, or from the board, that is, or the commission, I guess. But I think we've lost him at this point in the line, anyway. But if you do have a comment or question you'd like to provide, you can testify.
Sure, yeah.
Hi, my name is Forrest. Actually, I was just seeking some clarification.
Can you, sorry, can you provide your last name as well?
Yes, Forrest Dobson, D as in dog, O B as in boy, S-O-N. I'm a geotechnical engineer in training here in Anchorage. I was actually just seeking clarification because it sounds like pro the PL1 motion, we had a lot of testimony that it could be used for things like soccer fields, for example, Anchorage having its own soccer field. And then the Sand Lake Community Council made it sound like this would open it up to be maintenance sheds and homeless shelters and things like that. So I guess I was wondering, who's the ultimate authority on what the actual use of the PL1 land gets used for? That was all the clarification I was seeking.
Okay, thank you for the comment. I think the petitioner probably could speak to some of the, some of that, and then we might follow up with staff to have some questions, understanding the actual permitted uses under that zoning classification. Okay, I think we'll move on to the next phone call then.
Hi, is Carol available?
Yes, she.
This is the Planning and Zoning Commission calling for your testimony. And before we begin, could you please mute if you're listening in the background?
Yeah, I just did that, trying to hear the rest of it.
Thank you. Are you calling as an individual?
You're queuing me up. Are they ready now, or are you queuing me up?
Yes, are you calling as an individual or a representative of a group?
Yes, as an individual.
Okay, you have three minutes to provide your testimony. If you could state your full name for the record, you can begin.
Okay, thank you. This is Carol Ashlock. I live directly across the street in the Seacliff Terrace condos, have been there for 31 years from the gravel pits at the corner of Sand Lake and Diamond. I think I can answer a couple of different questions that have been posed by Mr. Spinelli, Mr. O'Quinn, some of the others regarding Sand Lake's opposition to this project. But first, let me state, that corner piece that's referenced as separate was something that ASNG did separate, and we've seen many incarnations in zoning in this property over the decades. Many promises have been made, of course, naturally as well. And we've all looked for development, responsible development. So that intention was for those to be sports fields, and that corner was supposed to be a clubhouse for the kids. Of course, that got rezoned to some kind of commercial thing, which even though it was refuted, S4's engineer at a Sand Lake meeting did tell us that that was intended for a gas station where we'd have hot croissants in the mornings. And then he was shushed away and asked to not talk to us anymore at one of the meetings. So these are not just rumors or fantasies in our heads, these are concerns. To the two soccer groups interested, the community supports that, but we don't want to see it turned into something else, like with the CU, if that's why Sand Lake opposes it. And there has been conversation from another engineer about homeless shelter, which there's no bus service for a mile, there are no real services to help any other people for approximately 10 miles or more. So it's totally inappropriate for that location. While the developers want to make their money off the land, there has to be a proper way that helps everyone and doesn't harm other people's property. I think Sand Lake and the community would consider a special limitation, that there be no edifices, no buildings built on that property. In that case, they would be willing to support such a change to SLI, because even though it's refuted, SLI includes the B3 as was passed by the assembly in July, just this past July. And that was something that one of S4's engineers debated with one of the assembly people who attended and said, hey, she said, hey, I voted on it in July, I know what it says, as well as the ordinance has been read out in that meeting. These are concerns of the community. We certainly support other sports activities and so forth, as we did with Jade Park when it came along, and that's worked out well. But to do part of it, or to maybe use pilings, as Francis suggested, and other methods of, oh, now I think I can dig down in there, and I'm only going to save part of the land, is not acceptable to the community. And that's why they have such mistrust, quite frankly. So again, we would support a special limitation, not a CU, but an SL, for there to be no buildings on that property. And then the community would be behind it. Thank you very much. Are there any questions that I might answer?
We don't see any questions here, so thank you very much for your testimony.
Okay, thank you for your time. I'm sorry to be so blunt, but I just have to talk turkey on this, and that's where everyone's at. I probably would have had more people if it hadn't been January 3rd, as was planned here. Thank you very much.
Okay, it looks like, do we have one more person to call? Thanks.
Would you like me to try again?
Sure, let's give one more try, thanks.
Hi, this is the Planning and Zoning Commission calling for your public testimony on case 2022-0002. Are you calling as a?
Yes.
Hi, are you calling as an individual or a representative of a group?
No, as an individual.
Okay, you'll have three minutes to provide your testimony. If you could state your full name for the record, you can begin.
Yeah, thank you. This is Liz Vasquez. I live in West Anchorage, nearby this proposal of rezoning. And there's several issues with this proposed rezoning. One, it is incompatible with the surrounding area, which is basically low-impact residential for one-family housing. The other issue is that it is not in conformance with the 2040 Anchorage Plan and also the plan for West Anchorage, and is very incompatible with the surrounding residential area. The proposal may include the ability to put a homeless shelter there. A homeless shelter there would not be a very good idea in light of the lack of services in the area and lack of public transportation and hospital facilities and clinic facilities. The, as I understand it, it appears that the packet submitted to the board did not include the resolution, resolution of the Sand Lake Community Council. That's all I have to say.
Thank you for your testimony, and if I heard your last point correctly, I can confirm for you that we did receive comments from the Sand Lake Community Council in our packet.
Okay, okay. I guess I misunderstood that. Thank you.
That concludes telephonic testimony.
Thank you. Seeing no one else here looking to testify, I think we've got 6 minutes and 43 seconds left for rebuttal.
Now I'd like to thank the community for speaking, and I'm happy to address the public comments, both those written and spoken here tonight. I'll start with some of the ones that are written. Noise and dust, there are operating times and municipal inspectors enforce noise and dust standards. Additionally, this rezone is the first part of the end-use to the site. The site is close to being completed and used as a park. That should resolve those concerns. Homeless shelter, this is the most common concern that I've been hearing from the community over the last few months. I spoke at two community council meetings, trying to reassure the community about this, but it keeps coming up. I believe this is where most of the concern is for the rezone. I'd like to reassure the community again. I'll start with, this is private property and not municipal-owned. A homeless shelter is not park-related. The comprehensive plan would not support that use. I'm confident in saying the planning department would not support that use. Also, this board would have to approve- department would not support that use. Also, this board would have to approve a homeless shelter, and I don't foresee this board approving a homeless shelter here. I understand the community's concern for that type of use, being near their homes, but in this case, it would not be allowed or approved. A homeless shelter is just not park-related, and I can speak more to that if the, if the board wishes or have staff confirm this. Comment on traffic, I believe the roads are collectors, but this is a rezone, and that would be more during a CUP application process and would address traffic at that time. For the question on who is the authority for approval, for the rezone, it's ultimately the Assembly, but for uses requiring a CUP, first would go through the planning, and then it would come to this board for approval, requiring a CUP. And I'll end with, this clearly conform, well, let me go. Matching the 2040 plan, as both staff and myself have stated, this is the exact zoning the 2040 plan indicates for the site, as shown on page 41 in the staff report. Matching the West Anchorage District Plan, again, as both planning staff and myself have shown, the West Anchorage District Plan classifies this area as PLI. This area is underserved by parks. This rezoning will significantly help that by adding 66 acres as other open space. And I'll end with, this clearly conforms to the comprehensive plans. Rezoning to other open space use under PLI will benefit the community as a whole, and I'm happy to answer any questions the board may have. Thank you.
I'll go ahead and ask a question. Can you speak a little bit to what types of structures the, the property could support in its current condition, and what exactly would be required to have something more substantial, like a, like a proper building?
Sure. So, right now, it's R1A residential. That could, if it was buildable, you could put over 300 homes on it. It's not buildable, it's all unclassified clean fill. So you can't put structures on that cost effectively. Not just foundations, but water and sewer. AWU would not approve sewer lines going through fill. So there's, you could probably build a pavilion, something to that effect, but I don't see how a structure could be feasibly built on this process, on this property and approved, especially for water and sewer.
Thank you. Okay, I don't see any further questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. I have a question for, for staff, maybe, before we move forward, and this is, maybe not specifically relevant to this particular site, given the limitations on the build, but looking through the uses in the table, you know, there are a couple of uses that appear to be permitted by right that read as maybe inconsistent with the uses described in the 2040 land use plan. So there, you know, references natural areas, passive use areas, indoor/outdoor recreation facilities, community playgrounds, some outdoor commercial recreation, agricultural nursery and horticultural uses. And I, if I'm looking at this table correctly, I see some potential office uses, including a broadcasting facility, and then just, just general office, business or professional. And I'm wondering if you could give a little clarity on kind of the alignment between the 2040 land use plan and the, the uses that are available under, under Title 21, and, and I don't know if there's some history there, or if I'm just not reading it correctly, but it doesn't seem like they completely line up to me. And as I said, it's more just kind of background educational information for me, since I don't, I don't view those uses as something that would, you know, even be doable for this particular site, but...
Boy, that's a difficult question. I don't know if I have a good answer, Mr. Gardner. There was great care in the planning department's recommendation on what uses shall be allowed at all in the PLI district, but through the public process, the commission and the Assembly changed that, and what ultimately got adopted is what we see before us. And, you know, so in some cases, there, you know, could be uses that through the public process were determined to be appropriate for the PLI district. The, you know, Anchorage 2040 was adopted with all of that in mind, obviously, because it proposes, it, it designates land use classifications with those colors and, and titles, you know, like compact mixed residential low, or, you know, park and natural resources area, you know, community facility. And, and then there's a implementing zoning district for those, for those land use designations or classifications. But I think maybe where you're going is, how could you have office be allowed in the PLI? It, it would, it may have been adopted by the Assembly that way.
Okay, thanks. I understand that's not a question with a, with a kind of an easy answer necessarily, but I appreciate some of that clarification. Commissioner Spinelli?
I guess I was wanting to kind of follow up on that. I don't, I don't know if this is correct, and maybe you can confirm this, Francis, but I, I tend to think that the PLI has those additional uses in them, because that's what exists in PLI today. There's plenty of PLI land with those uses in them. University lands come to mind and a few others, and I, I think that's probably why those are in there.
Through the chair, Mr. Spinelli, that, that's a, a great thought. There is a desire not to make existing uses non-conforming, because it causes trouble for them to, you know, expand or to change, because they, they have a non-conforming status if it's no longer allowed in the zoning. You know, it's a grandfather right sort of situation. So there's, there's a strong desire by most properties not to be non-conforming.
Okay, well, I've got no one in the queue, so what's the will of the body? We've got a motion, a motion by Commissioner O'Quinn.
In the matter of case number 2022-0002, recommend approval to the Anchorage Assembly of the rezone from R1A single-family residential district to PLI, subject to staff's recommendations, and with the language and the proposed ordinance as attached.
Okay, that motion is seconded by Commissioner Polis. Do you wish to speak to your motion?
Yeah, I intend to support the motion. Heard a lot of issues tonight with the, the thought use of what it could be, and, and I think even if something like that came up, it'd be a pretty, pretty tall mountain to climb in a major site plan review or a conditional use situation. So I think the community will get their chance to chime in if that ever came up. It meets all the approval criteria listed in the packet. I'd see a real hard time developing a large structure on this site. I know it's gone into that site, and it'd take quite the budget to make that work out, so that's not something I'm concerned about. And then details, such as the traffic impact analysis and stuff like that, that'll all get worked out permitting. I just don't see a use that could come up that, that would get through the system very easy of what these people are talking about. So I acknowledge their, their fear of what could get there, but based on everything I've heard, it sounds like it's kind of a win for Anchorage, in my opinion.
Okay, I'll, I'll just go ahead and say I support the motion as well, and I just wanted to note for the record that this is consistent with the 2040 plan and the West Anchorage District Plan, and it is the implementing zoning district that has been identified for this particular property. So from that perspective, it seems pretty straightforward in that plan and the zoning districts that go with the land use classifications. You know, as we heard from staff earlier, there, there's a lengthy public process to, to reach that result. Okay, seeing nothing further, we'll call the vote.
Mr. Strike?
Yes.
Ms. Krishna?
Yes.
Mr. Dimick?
Abstaining.
You are permitted to vote, Commissioner Dimick.
Okay, but then I'll vote with, to agree, to approve.
Okay, that motion passes. Next case on the agenda is 2022-0006. Can we hear a report from staff?
Thank you. The planning department is proposing amendments to Anchorage Municipal Code Title 21 to increase the square footage allowed for health services in the GC7 Town, Townsite Square Commercial District in Girdwood from 6,500 square feet to 7,500 square feet. This text amendment will allow the Girdwood Health Clinic to expand up to 7,500 square feet. This increase in square footage is to meet the demand of health services in the Girdwood community, which has been made evident through ongoing renovations to the existing facility. The Girdwood Health Clinic obtained approval for a major site plan review for the new clinic from the Urban Design Commission on May 26, 2021. This approval was for phase one of the development, which will be just over 6,400 square feet. Later phases of the development will increase the square footage to include a behavioral health support space. No reviewing agencies object to this text amendment, and no comments have been received from the public. The Girdwood Board of Supervisors provided a resolution in support of this text amendment on September 24, 2021. The planning department recommends approval of text amendments to AMC Title 21, Section 2109050, to increase the square footage allowed for health services in the GC7 district from 6,500 to 7,500 square feet, attached to the drafted Assembly ordinance. Thank you.
Commissioner O'Quinn, I see you poking. I'm not sure if you're trying to put yourself into the queue. So I don't see anyone else available to testify here on behalf of the public. Do we have any? So we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. I still don't see anyone looking to testify, and we don't have anyone on a phone list as well, so we will go ahead and close the public hearing. Does staff have anything further to add?
No, thank you.
Okay, now we will officially close the public hearing. Okay, we're at that point. What's the will of the body here? If you want to wait a second, you might get the benefit of, of some wording you can use. Or you can just read from the subject line of the packet. Okay, motion by Commissioner Polis.
In case 2022-0006, I make a motion to approve, recommend approval to Anchorage Assembly text amendments for use regulations to increase the square footage allowed for health services in the GC7 from 6,500 square feet to 7,500 square feet.
Okay, that motion is seconded by Commissioner O'Quinn. Does anyone like to speak to the motion? I see Commissioner Spinelli.
Yeah, I intend to support the motion. I'll just note that it's also supported by the written resolution from the Girdwood Board of Supervisors.
Okay, we've got no one else in the queue here. We'll go ahead and call the vote.
Mr. Strike?
Yes.
Ms. Krishna?
Yes.
Mr. Dimick?
Yes.
Thank you.
That motion passes. Nothing further on the agenda. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Still moved.
Eh, moved and...
Seconded.
Sorry, everyone, I got a little ahead here. Moved by Commissioner Polis, seconded by Commissioner O'Quinn, and we are adjourned. Thank you.